All right, we'll call this meeting to order.
Carolyn, roll call.
Director Gerspitz, here. Director Hockert, here. Director Kelsberg, here. Director Lauer, here. Director Parker, here. Director Feilander, here. Chair Sherman, here. You perform. Let's, we'll make a motion here to approve today's agenda. Can I get a second? Sure. Director Feilander with a second. All those in favor of approving today's agenda? This morning's agenda, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Agenda passes. Okay. We are here this morning to talk about insurance renewal approval. Welcome, Chris. Go over some of the specifics of this.
Right. Good morning. Thanks for having me. We are here today to talk about, I guess, a fairly challenging subject. Not one that we're super excited about, given our current situation. But nevertheless, we'll go through where we're at with our insurance renewal. And then you guys can ask questions.
Was it working? It's the arrows left and right.
Right, so based on our current situation, we projected through our insurance consultant $24 million in claims and fixed costs moving ahead. Premium, anticipated premium income is at $20 million, 20.5 million. So we are finding ourselves short $3.5 million in revenue to support our plan. Some of the reason for that, our increased claim costs and also the changes that we made in insurance have an impact on that, on the plan changes last year as well. So there's a little bit of that involved in this as well. Next slide.
Hold on a second. So not everyone was on the board last year. So what happened last year was we had, for years and years, Stillwater has had two plans that they offered our employees. We've had the, what we call the high deductible plan, which is our current plan. Prior to that, we had a, was it a zero deductible?
Yeah, it was just a copay plan, so.
So, which was exceptionally rare and exceptionally expensive. And it was really dragging the pool down in expense. And the people on the high deductible plan, or the higher deductible plan were actually supporting people on the gold plan. So committee a year ago made a decision and the bargaining units agreed with it to just go to one plan. Well, the impact of that was felt in the short term and we're seeing part of that right now. As people who were on the gold plan, which they had no deductible, had heavy utilization last spring before we transitioned to the, just the single plan. And our rates are determined based on a 24-month period. So the usage last spring had significant impact on our renewal. So that's just a little background for you on that.
Yes. And also part of that is, you know, we did try to help ease the transition through the Viva contribution. So it didn't always match the deductible and last year it did match the deductible. So that was to help the folks on the gold plan to get adapted to that high deductible. So as we look at our renewal right now, we are facing double-digit insurance renewal costs. Our claims continue to go up. And we are looking at ways to help us reduce claims in the future. Got a couple of things in the plan for next year, but that's not going to help us out with this year, with this coming year. We've been looking for ways to reduce claim costs for the coming year. And we're looking, as it says, for long-term solutions to reduce the claims and increase premium income. Because where we're at is we don't have enough premium income versus claims. And so really adjusting the claims is one of the few levers that we actually have to pull. So the GLP-1s, if you're not familiar with those, they are medications that are used initially for type 2 diabetes, I think is how they evolved. But they are also used to treat persistent obesity and weight loss for folks who are struggling with that. So these are just some of the ones, and I'm sure you've heard of other ones that, certainly the advertisements on TV are all over the place. So these are just a couple of examples of weight loss drugs that are commonly used in our group.
Chris, just a quick question. Are those three the only ones that are covered or just examples of ones that are available?
No, those are just examples.
Okay.
You know, there are probably, there's listed probably more than a dozen.
Yeah, okay.
That are listed as being used for weight loss management.
So we currently cover all of them that are available?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So why we ended up on this, or why we landed here? We've been looking hard at alternative ways. I've been going back through our other benefits. I've looked hard at our LTD. I've looked at our, at our life insurance. I've looked at how can we, you know, is there a way that we can shift the cost of one benefit that's not as expensive on an employee individual basis to employees and then be able to divert those funds then into our medical insurance plan to help offset some of those costs? We looked at tiered prescriptions. We looked at adding copays. We've looked at increasing deductibles. And all of those have small, very small impacts. 1% or 2% of a change versus, and the other impact of that is if we lower the deductible and we set premiums based on that, then we still have less premium coming in, which is where we're going to get stuck. So really the only way to lower our cost is to reduce claims. And this GLP-1 is a group of medications. It is for, it's the fastest growing, as we have on the slide here. In our slide there too, you can see that just one medication increased 134% in the space of a year. So the medication usage is growing exponentially. And they represent a very small group of our overall insured population. So this was, this is one lever that we can pull to help reduce the claims so that we don't have to increase the premium as much.
So overall, the population is, 3,000 people are covered?
Well, there's 900, yeah, you're right. Individuals, belly buttons, as they like to say in insurance.
3,000 people are covered. So out of those 3,000 people, 90 are accounting for this cost.
Yes, Sarah.
Just a couple of questions, just for clarification. Is there a PBM? I mean, does the district have a PBM?
Yep, we do get rebates on insurance. And there is a PBM in the middle of that.
Okay, so is there, I'm just thinking in terms of like,
utilization management resources?
Like, I guess I don't, part of my question is, do we know why people are using these drugs? Do we know it's solely for weight loss or is it for other types of things? Because what I've seen other plans do is implement case management programs that say you can use these drugs but only for, with the assistance of a PBM to help manage those costs because it's kind of a universal issue that these drugs are really expensive.
Well, I think Blue Cross has, Erin has shared with us that Blue Cross is implementing a plan for some much more in-depth screening. And so I think Blue Cross is going to manage that much more closely.
Okay.
I don't know that they're going to do it through a PBM, but I can find out.
Sorry, and I should be clear, yeah, PBM is a pharmacy benefits manager, sorry. And they're usually, with respect to the plan's prescription drugs, they're sort of the management arm of that side of the health insurance plan, sorry.
The other questions about that? Okay, so moving on.
I was just, I was asked that question. But just, can you repeat what your response was to Director Sherman's question on PBM's?
Yeah, I mean, what I understand is from Erin is that Blue Cross is implementing a much more in-depth screening process. So they're going to be reviewing those and so that we can do a little bit more cost containment. Because what has happened, and this is obviously from Erin's research and what he's shared with us, is that oftentimes folks are given, have been given in the past, like a full-year prescription for the medication. And then they're given like maybe three months at a time when they're first trying it and it doesn't go very well. Either it doesn't work for them or they don't like the side effects or whatever. And then they stop taking it when it's already been paid. So making sure that we're only giving like a 30-day prescription out at a time and then that we're closely managing and monitoring who is eligible for those medications.
And do we have any estimates on what that cost savings might look like with those additional safeguards implemented?
Just, also can you explain who Erin is?
I'm sorry.
Can you explain who Erin is?
Oh, yes. Erin Casper is our insurance consultant. So we switched consultants from One Digital to NIS last year. And so he is our insurance consultant and he guides all of our insurance committee meetings to help us figure out, you know, what is the next step? What's going on in the market? And, you know, where we're at with our plan, both financially and plan-wise. Gives us information about plan designs, plan design changes. He's the one who helped us with figuring out, is the deductible or isn't the deductible something that's going to have an impact or not?
And Erin is extremely familiar with school districts. He's the chair of the Edenbury School Board. So he works with school districts throughout this time.
And do we know what they're doing? I mean, other districts, I mean?
Yeah, so just anecdotally, I know, you know, there was an email string that went out that said, you know, what are you doing? There were about 11 school districts that responded and half of them, it was, it was, it was, as near as a 50-50 split as it could be. Six in favor of keeping, five in favor of only keeping for weight loss, or sorry, for diabetes treatment.
And so that's the proposal here, is to keep them just specifically for diabetes, not for weight loss?
Yeah, I mean, it is for, we're not going to be eliminating medications for type 2 diabetes. When we look at the GLP-1 spend, it's over $1 million. It's around 1.2. But $700,000 of that is for treatment of those illnesses. It's really just that, that one category of half a million.
Parker?
Hey, thanks a lot for this, two questions. One, can you describe who the insurance committee is? Because it looks like the insurance committee is recommending the continuing coverage for this?
Yep, they are.
And then, and then second, is there any, have we in the past, or is there, is there examples of specific medications or treatment options being excluded? Can you just talk maybe a bit about the insurance committee first and then talk about the?
Yep, absolutely. The insurance committee is made up of representatives of all the bargaining units. So they've been around for a long time. Many of the people that are on the committee have been on the committee for years and years and years and years. And they've watched all the changes over the years. In addition, there is someone on the committee who's representing retirees. So there's a wide range of folks on the committee. And as far as, as far as I know and based on the conversations that we've had at the table with the insurance committee, we do not believe that the district has ever excluded any treatments or medications from the insurance plan in the past.
Got it. And then the question for us is, are you making a recommendation for us that's on the summary? Or are we making a determination or is this information only?
We are asking you to make a determination.
And that is between A and B, like the 18% and the 13%? Or?
Yes.
Continue?
Sure. So you can see on the screen the impact of the premiums. Currently, the premiums are 8.13 for a single and 23.19 for a family. The 18% increase, you can see those totals reflected there. 9.59 per single, 27.37 for family versus a 13% increase of 9.18 and then 26.21.
Are those, is that monthly or?
Those are monthly, yes. As we talked about this in committee, to your point, Parker, yes, the committee has recommended that we continue to cover the GLP-1s at the 18% increase. So as we discussed the concerns with the insurance committee, overall, it was felt that we might need more input. So we did prepare a survey to bring that to the larger population of our insured employees. So we got 66% of our employees responded. So again, this is the insured group. So we didn't go out to every last employee to ask the question, which is those who are currently on our insurance plans. 44% of the respondents have family coverage. 56% of respondents are at least somewhat familiar with GLP medications for weight loss. 69% of respondents indicated their preference to discontinue coverage in order to contain premium costs.
Okay, just a quick question. Just on the timeline there. Did the insurance committee get the results from the survey and weigh that into their decision or did they make that decision before the results?
So they'd initially made the decision before that. But then we brought the survey results to the committee yesterday morning. So they had a chance to rethink that. And the, just the temperature in the room indicated that they would stick with their, with their recommendation to continue to cover.
Did they articulate a rationale or?
I think the rationales are just, you know, they didn't feel like singling out a specific medication. We did receive a lot of feedback from folks who have very poignant stories to tell about their experience with these medications. I think all of that weighs heavily, as I'm sure it does on all of you. So making the decision is just a really tough one. Because we're, you know, we're talking about people. So they, they did not appear to waver on their recommendation.
Just one little question, just to clarify. At the 18 or, or, you know, 13% increase, that makes up the difference? That makes up the difference in the 3.5 million?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I mean, we're, yes, we're just a little bit over even. So we're, we're going to get a little bit into the fund balance to help grow that and we're going to, you know, not be in the hole. So this is survey information. So you can see how many folks, we have a total of 904 folks enroll in our insurance. Employees enroll, which is different than employees covered, or sorry, than people covered. 593 employees responded to the survey. So of the teacher group, you know, about 65% of them responded to the survey. I think the highest we had for percentage of participation was the coordinator, supervisor, and specialist group. We also had very high percentage among the nutrition services group. About 60% of the paras responded. So that just gives you a sense of, you know, who all was looking at the survey and who weighed in. So this is the, this is the final question on the survey. It was just five questions. And so the result is, you know, pretty much a 73 split in favor of not continuing to cover the GLP-1 for weight loss. This slide shows you kind of a breakdown by group. So you can see how many folks in each one of those bargaining units voted which way. So the red is to discontinue, the blue is to continue those coverages. So we're obviously aware that this is a sensitive topic. It affects, you know, people in a very personal way. The survey results came from a wide variety and I think it was pretty well represented. It's unusual to get such a high percentage of folks to respond to a survey. And, you know, we did end up with most folks voting to discontinue coverage. And as we have in our, we've already discussed, the insurance committee does recommend moving forward to continuing coverage.
All right, so now for discussion and we'll start with Sarah.
I'm sorry. I think one question I have is with the switch to a high deductible health plan, it seems like naturally members are going to be absorbing more of the cost with this arrangement. Do we, I guess my question is, do we know what these costs are going to look like for next year's renewal now that we have people paying more upfront for drugs that previously, I think, were probably covered by the plan?
At this point, I don't think we're looking, you know, quite that far ahead. I think we need to figure out where we're at this year before we can look at what next year, what the following year is going to look like.
Part of the reason for the increase is our consultant believes usage for those drugs is going to continue to increase. And that's why we're looking at 9.18 versus 13.
Director Feilander?
Can you just light up what is the school district's kind of exposure with this? So you're sharing like the premiums for the participants. What does that look like in terms of the shared responsibility from the district? Within those scenarios?
That's a great question. We can talk history here a little bit and then we can talk what the reality of our bargaining unit agreements are. So past practice for the district for a number of years has been to maintain an 85-15% contribution before negotiations even begin or are completed. So for example, we've got different units right now that are going to start, we have one unit that compares us currently in the middle of negotiations, but we have a number that are going to start after July 1st.
That's an MOU.
So historically, the district has just increased our contribution to maintain an 85-15 relationship. So, you know, you're aware of the big, bigger budget concern that we have. And so we cannot, with these consistent double-digit increases, we cannot maintain an 85-15 relationship like we have had. So we have suggested to the committee that we are looking at a district increase of contribution and this would have to be done through an MOU of 6.5% towards the 13 or towards the 18 and that the employees would have to pick up the rest. Now, those MOUs have not been agreed to. The, one thing we're waiting for is the board to establish what the, you know, what the renewal rate is for next year. And that's kind of why we're having, what we have a special meeting this morning so we can start to get moving forward with the renewal and start talking to the units about, okay, here's what the, our proposed MOU is for our contribution. If we didn't have an MOU, then technically the district would not increase any of our contribution until after the negotiations were complete. That's, that's what works, that's how it works in most of all the other districts. So I don't, that answer question or?
So just a sort of normal process most of the districts is that an MOU does not go into place or the increases are temporarily covered by the?
By the employee.
By the employee, okay. And then there was to be like a?
Then it's worth, then it's worth throwing away in the agreement.
But that's not, has been still under?
Has not been best practice here.
Not still under?
Correct.
All right, Parker? Kind of going back to my other question about the drugs that are covered in this plan, that we cover all of them for weight loss. Is there a way to limit the, like, pull out of there for particular drug or couple drugs that are the most expensive to kind of amend the plan to make it a little bit more cost-effective for the district? Or is it an all or nothing kind of thing?
We did go back to Blue Cross with that. And it is an all or nothing. That was the answer that we received from the insurance company. So they won't, it can choose particular medications out of this classification and eliminate or not cover those.
Dr. Funk?
Chris, this was asked the insurance committee yesterday and we didn't have an answer at the time and I'll be able to find it. So people who currently are, have prescriptions for the obesity management drug, are they, what happens to them post-July 1 if the board were to say, okay, we're going to go off the, you know, remove off the plan?
I did get an answer to that later in the day. So the question was asked, you know, that and then would we be able to grandfather in those who already are using those medications? And the answer to that was, that would more or less defeat the point of the reduction. So the answer to that would be no, the prescriptions would end as of July 1 with the new plan. And grandfathering, yeah, it, the whole point of eliminating them is to save the money and it's the folks who are already on them that are, that we're spending the money on. So yeah, we would not be able to grandfather them into the plan.
And did we get an answer to the other part of the question is what happens to them? Like today they spend $10 because it's a copay and tomorrow they're going to spend $1,000 a month? Or what is, what is, do we know what those numbers are?
I don't know what the exact copays are. I mean, I've heard that, yes, those, some of those medications are north of $1,000 a month. But yes, they would, they would have to start paying out of pocket if it comes to them.
Do we have an idea of, I don't know, the medicine behind it? The impacts of going off? If it's cost prohibitive for them to stop to pay for it moving forward if we're not covering it? What are the effects of not using the drug anymore?
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to comment on that. That's well outside of my field. I have no idea what the side effects would be of stopping those medications. I have firsthand, personal experience from friends who have stopped, but I can't extrapolate that out to a wider population. And the effects haven't been bad, but, you know, again, that's just people I know.
Are they currently under a copay right now? Because I, we're on a, the district's on a high deductible health plan right now, right?
Yep.
So are the drugs themselves on like a, is the formula, are they subject to? They couldn't be, I guess, for a high deductible health plan. So people must be paying out of pocket, at least up to their deductible.
I mean, that's not always true. You can have, you can have a copay on with a?
If it's not HSE, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I believe these folks are paying a copay.
Okay, so then right now the formulary is subject to, or these GLP-1s are subject to a copay even though the plan is a high deductible health plan? Do we know what the copays are? Is it just that the copay would go away?
That, I, you know what, I'm sorry, I don't know answer that.
That's okay, I was just, I just, I was thinking they'd be paying out of pocket from it. It sounds like they are still subject to a copay, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly get back to you on that.
Yeah.
I'll be able to find it. Okay.
Yeah, Parker, thanks. I'm not sure you're going to be able to answer this one either.
Okay.
But is there an opportunity to know, like, do we have generics coming out like in the near future that will substantially lower costs? I guess I'm thinking about this in terms of, we've got all the main brands, they're going to hike up their prices beginning until generics and then the market kind of corrects a little bit. Do you have any idea if those generics are coming soon, like?
I think, you know, Erin has shared with us that, you know, those are definitely on the horizon. You know, and as patents expire, you know, more and more. We also have been hearing that there's a pill form that's, you know, coming. But I don't know.
I'm hearing earliest, this is just through the media, 27, 2027.
2027.
At the earliest.
Would there be an opportunity to revisit this once generics are on the market?
Yeah.
Couple thoughts on that, all right? So we talked about this a little bit in committee meeting yesterday as well. So one of the concerns is, two things came up related to this. So one of the concerns is, two things came up related to this. One of the questions was, okay, well, if you do this for obesity management, why don't you do the same thing for diabetes? Right? And I, I don't know any insurance plan to include Medicaid, which is Medicaid is just starting to exclude the obesity management piece from theirs, Medicare. I don't know any of them out there, anybody out there that's excluding this for diabetes. So that's going to stay, all right? The other question was, because we brought up, okay, you know, this is cost, very, very costly right now. But, you know, yes, the generics may be coming. And so the question was asked, well, at what price point? And I think if you were to look at, you know, Chris talked about different districts out there who are, some are excluding, some are keeping. I think a significant piece of that is what the fund balance is within their insurance pool. Some districts have a strong enough fund balance, okay, we can afford to continue this until the generics might kick in. Unfortunately, in Stillwater, like our regular fund balance in the general formula, our insurance fund balance is much lower than we'd like it to be. So we need to be able to try and build that back up. So that's where, we don't have the option of, you know, we could, so what, we don't have the option of saying, okay, we want to keep it and keep our rates at a certain level. If we want to keep the GLPs, the rates are going to have to be this level because we don't have the healthy fund balance.
And to get back to Sarah, to your question too, it is a co-pay situation for those, for those medications. So there's a generic co-pay, there's a brand co-pay, and then there's the non-formulary not covered.
So these would be moving into the not covered or they just wouldn't have a co-pay anymore? They'd be subject to the deductible?
They would be subject to the deductible.
Okay, okay, so they're covered, it's just that people have to pay out of pocket for them?
They would have to pay out of pocket. And so they could use their FSA, if they had an FSA account to pay for that, they, you know, they would have that option.
I think you should be...
Um, it's a medical expense, so I would guess that, you know, that you, that you could do that. And it's still a prescription, it's still a medical expense, so I don't see any reason why you couldn't use your VIBA to pay for that.
Right, okay, so I'm just, yeah, just want to make, so I guess that's my big question. Are they still on the formulary? It's just that they don't, the co-pay is going away, so people have more of a responsibility upfront, at least until they hit their deductible? That's, I guess that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Yes.
Okay, so when they hit their deductible or their out-of-pocket max, would the drug be covered then?
Um, I'm going to have to check on that because I, I can see where, I could see where it could go either way and so I would want to be sure before I answer that.
Okay. I think that could matter, I mean, just in terms of, it's about cost sharing. Right.
Dr. Parker, are you there?
Yeah, so, um, could you just provide some, and this might be a weird question, but, you know, obviously we're in a difficult financial situation as it stands currently. What's the cause and effect of, you know, the 18% versus the 13 with no GLP? You know, there's always unintended consequences, so, you know, I guess I'd just be interested in what does that look like? And how does, you know, want to be extremely mindful of how it impacts individuals, but also then how does this impact, you know, the greater good of the students in the classroom? Is there a, an impact on that because of these increased costs to the district? What would that exposure look like? If that makes sense?
Marie and I were just talking about $2.4 million was the, was the cost to the district, which is not, not figured into the budget that we currently laid out.
So the 18% would, would have a $2.4 million exposure to the district?
Yes.
Okay, which is not being accounted for in the current...
The 85-15, if you kept everything...
And that is equal?
Yes.
Okay. And what happens with the 85-15 if that changes? Again, based on prior history, Stillwater's always just an MOU, but is there precedent of where that exposures pass along to employees? You know, it sounds like other districts do that, but it seems to me that seems like that would make sense until there would be an MOU. But again, I don't want to get ahead of myself.
We need an MOU because our current agreements say, here's the fixed amount we pay for the premium. Okay? And if we don't have an MOU, that's the fixed amount we pay for the premium moving forward until the new contract is negotiated. So by providing an MOU to the employees in an agreement that the district is going to increase the contribution to X, then, okay, we're helping them out to some degree. Now, when we come to negotiations, they may say, guess what, all right? We want to stay at 85-15. Okay, great, well, we have to figure out how we're going to, you know, what are we going to give up to keep that arrangement? So, yeah, is, I mean, this is, it's complicated by a number of different factors here. So I hope that helps.
It is complicated because we don't, there's decisions that have yet been agreed upon that we have to make assumptions.
Correct.
You may have answered my question, let me try. So we might be making a decision here, right? And how is that separate from any negotiations with all the, the units?
Negotiations is based on, is figuring out what portion of will employees pay versus the district?
So you, what we're asking you to do today is to set the premium amounts for the next, basically, school year, all right? And so regardless of what's in the employee contract, this is the new amount of the premium, okay? Historically, the district has said, if this is the amount of the premium, okay, we contribute 85% of that and it automatically goes up. What we're saying right now is, this is the amount of new premium. We were to continue with the same relationship, that would be another $2.4 million hole in the budget. So we are going to have to take a look at what percent we can afford to, to continue to work with our employees on insurance.
Then does that get balanced out the next negotiation or...
Yeah, so the next negotiation takes place. So like, say, we start negotiating next fall and we said, well, we've, you know, agreed to a 6.5% increase to the district contribution. And then our unit could say, okay, well, that's fine. Or they could say, well, we want a full 85-15 arrangement. And then, okay, well, that's going to cost X amount of dollars to do that and there'll be less money over here then for salary, et cetera. So that's where, that's what we're, we, that's what we're working through, okay?
And for, for me, I worry because we hear at the board table a lot about like our non-relationship employees, parents, custodians, food service. And these kind of premium increases are going to only exacerbate our ability to retain employees. I mean, I can't help but think of like how that could impact if, you know, you mentioned, I think it was 90 versus 3,000. And it's hard to remove the human cop. Obviously, there's 90 people that are benefiting, but there's a lot of people who are going to be asked on small salaries that are under, kind of where we, you know, and comparatively maybe to other districts, that are going to be taking more responsibility. And how might that affect our ability to hire parents, hire food service, hire custodians? I don't know, just a unintended consequence, I guess.
And from a healthcare compliance standpoint, is, I'm assuming there's no issues in excluding certain prescriptions or procedures? I guess I don't know how that would work, obviously, just from a liability standpoint for the district. I'm thinking, you know, that could be impact. I guess I don't know what that would be, I just want to be mindful of, you know, those types of issues.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we, we trust that Erin is an expert in his field and in his business. And so he would not have made such a recommendation if, if he thought that we were putting the district at risk.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's, that's part of that relationship of him and I've seen through his diligence to provide the best feedback.
Because he's managed, he manages the, the compliance for our whole plan. He makes sure that, you know, we have, you know, all the I's dotted, the T's crossed and that we are following all of the compliance timelines because there's different reporting we have to do. So we have to trust his expertise in advising us with insurance matters.
And has this been vetted through our legal services, through like Nick?
No.
Okay.
Are we relying on our insurance?
Insurance, okay, okay.
Yes.
So the delta between the two for the, the district is about $600,000, is that the right way to think about that?
Um, I guess I'm not...
Actually, no, it's not, sorry, 600,000 times the, the split of the 85-15 would be the exposure, right? So it'd be...
Sorry, I don't know.
Could you, could you restate that, Parker?
Sure, uh, medications look like the cost about $600,000 from slide, why the focus on GLP weight loss drugs that titled that slide? So if it's about $600,000, if right now that were translated then to a premium increase or delta between those two and the, the district exposure would be 85% of that currently?
Yes. Well, that's, you know, if we, if we come to an MOU and we would agree to 85%, yes.
Right, so assuming status quo. So that would have some impact, that's like, where the difference is like $450,000 for the district or something like that? Okay.
I'm going to go with that one.
So obviously the special session was called for this. Can you just share some insight in terms of this time sensitivity around this and reason for it?
Yeah.
Obviously, you're coming to us today for a reason.
Yeah, so we are coming to you today because we are in a time crunch. We do have to get open enrollment up and running. And we use an outside agency to, an outside vendor to process that. And so we are shooting for open enrollment May 5th. And we need to get rates established, we need to have MOUs in place. And then all of that has to be loaded into, into that system so that all of our employees can open enroll before they head out for the summer. So that's the timeline, we need to have the rates established prior, you know, obviously at least a couple of weeks prior to May 5th in order to make sure that we have everything up and running for open enrollment.
But we also have to get the MOUs in place.
Yes, it's part of that.
Before all that happens?
Mm-hmm, yep.
A lot of moving parts.
There are a lot of moving parts.
So obviously staff doesn't, this is a board decision. Does staff have any thoughts that they would like to share?
I think there's two ways to look at it. I mean, I think you've got two different recommendations here. You have the fiscal recommendation, which is purely looking at the numbers and, you know, looking at the numbers from a district level and the financial stress we're under. That's, okay, this is the most prudent thing to do, I would suggest excluding you up there. Then you have the human recommendation and that is what the insurance committee is, is weighing and saying, okay, this impacts people's lives and as, as such, you know, we don't think you should be excluding any of this. So I got the, Erin Casper, I got a question for her on the line, so I will be right back.
Okay.
Really quick, can I ask?
Hey, here's a quick question for you.
Can I, sorry, can I ask, so we know it's covered for diabetes regardless.
Like if the decision today, it's not changing.
Diabetes will be covered for these because it's a medical, you know, condition. What about if, if there's some sort of, I mean, there's a process of assuming within our plan where a doctor recommendation, they, they'd be able to petition for coverage in certain situations that maybe aren't as black and white? Does that process exist?
Yeah, there is, there's definitely an appeal process through Blue Cross, Blue Shield. So if a, if a, if a member was not happy with any denial of medical treatment, whether it's, you know, GLP-1 or a procedure or any of that, there's definitely an appeals process that folks can...
I'm still struggling with terminology though here because we, we say, we're talking about excluding. But is it, are we excluding it or are we saying you need to pay, you're not going to have a co-pay for it anymore and you're going to need to pay for it out of, I guess, is it still on the formulary?
I just answered, I just got that answer.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so...
I think that matters a lot.
Yeah, so he said that it's no longer, um, there's no discounts to it as for being part of our plan anymore, but you are able to use VIBA dollars, you are able to use Flex dollars to pay for it. So, um, so you can continue to, but there will be no discount on it because it's, we're not officially offering it as an option. But you could certainly use the medical accounts, savings accounts or VIBA to pay for it.
And how does that apply then to like out-of-pocket max or deductible?
Yeah.
So again, looking at that, if a participant hits that, now is the district unhooked?
No.
Or is it, they're still, the participant is still required to cover it out of pocket or not?
Correct, after they've used, after they have used their Flex and their VIBA money, then it's out of pocket for them.
Okay, so it is, it is truly not covered then?
Correct.
Okay. Unless it's a, unless it's to eating or some...
Yep.
Decisions.
You, just trying to recap for my mind. You said there's like 60 people that might be affected...
90.
By, 90, okay. And can you take a typical example? So right now they would be paying nothing because it's covered?
Uh, they'd be paying a co-pay, so like $20.
Okay, and then if this goes through, now they could be paying, worst case, $1,000 a month until...
Well, the cost of, of the one that is most commonly prescribed is around $9,800 a year.
Okay, and the district would save how much money if, with this?
Half a million dollars.
Half a million, okay. Um, so to my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but for Medicare purposes, just looking at just a baseline, GLP-1s are covered for diabetes? I think maybe cardiovascular, but not for weight loss?
Right.
Okay, and so is cardiovascular then a part of this or would just want to be diabetes only?
Um, I mean cardiovascular would be included in this. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a medical purpose. The only thing that's really excluded is, is weight management.
Weight specific, so if there's underlying heart issues, obviously cardiovascular, which could lead to heart attacks. Obviously, it's, you know, horrific for the person or the family, but obviously huge costs for the plan also.
Yeah.
But that would also still be included, okay?
To that point then, if there was a medical necessity, a recommendation from a provider to use the GLP-1 for say like a mental health condition or something else that might not be diabetes or cardiovascular disease, is there a path to coverage in those cases?
I don't know that there's a path to coverage. I think the review process, the process instigator for that, for those medications would, would come into place.
Okay, so they might, okay, they, I guess, Mike, is, is there still a medical, is it, can it be covered if it's determined to be medically necessary by Blue Cross after they review it?
I think if Blue Cross determines that it's medically necessary through their process, you know, then they would cover it.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Yeah, hard discussion, so ideally you would like a vote today.
There are any thoughts from the board on motions, how they want to proceed? Additional conversation?
Oh, I can start a conversation. I don't necessarily have a motion at this point. I'm really struggling with this. Definitely weighing a lot of the, I feel like we are really in our territory with having to eliminate a particular drug for use. I know it's not completely going away, and that I feel like is a heavy decision. I also, I much better understand the financial impact from the presentation and kind of how this is going to work in real life. And I'm super into the finances as well, and there's so many variables that will factor into that decision and, and the implications of that decision as well. So I am really struggling. I think at this point, I'm maybe leaning more towards the like prioritizing the financial impact, especially looking at the survey and kind of the wider reaching impact this will have on everybody. And also, I do have a hope that once generics are back in the picture, that we could potentially revisit in a couple of years. But I also don't want to necessarily wait and try to bridge that gap because I don't know when those are coming. And if only one gets approved, I mean, I feel like that's a risky, risky proposition as well. So I guess I'm not quite sure where to land yet, but that's at least my thought process. And I'm super curious how everybody else is processing this as well because, yeah, I could go either way at this point.
Yes, Director.
Parker, just to clarify a previous discussion. So regarding the eighteen percent increase, based on the assumption of the status quo eighty-five fifteen, the district would have an additional debt of such two point four million on top of the existing five point four?
The district, the total cost of the eighty-five fifteen is two point four million. With the six and a half percent contribution that the district has been proposing, that contribution's about one point two, one point three million. So that additional cost would be about one point one million.
But the six and a half percent is based on a future negotiation approval process that's not yet gone?
And if they don't approve it, they don't get any agrees?
Okay. So there's a kind of a stop loss for the district from?
Yeah, I mean, if the current contract language is X. We're proposing X plus six and a half percent. If they don't agree to it, it defaults to X minus, it defaults to X.
Just really quick, just to follow up, and then Parker, Parker has his, you know, the one point two to one point three, the six and a half, is that in the budget that you presented with the council?
Correct.
Okay.
Just to clarify.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Parker, go ahead.
Hey, thanks a lot. And Kay, thanks for kicking off the conversation portion of this. For me, I struggle with the survey versus the investment committee recommendation as well. The, to me, with what happens in the survey, people may answer what is best for them. But I think that what I struggle with, how that will actually be represented when people are talking. And while I don't want to discount that at all, I do, I do struggle with going against the investment committee after they have taken that survey into account. And that, that makes me a little bit hesitant to, to to change to the, excluding the GLP-1s.
Director Feingold?
Yeah. I would kind of echo a lot of the comments Director Hockert made. This is a heavy decision, it impacts people's lives and, you know, personally. So it's just something that, that can't be ignored. It's also hard because we have the fiduciary responsibility, like it's what's in the best interest of the district as a whole. And I think the challenge for me is that financially, we're just still in a, in a tough spot that I think we're making progress, but it's going to take time and some continued difficult decisions. And we've already seen, you know, through the priority-based budgeting, how hard those decisions can be that directly impact people's lives already. And so, you know, as I look at it from an economic standpoint, you know, what impacts, what decision benefits the greater, greatest good? You know, I think just because of the variables that we have, I would, you know, similar to Director Hockert, lean more towards taking the fiscally prudent approach, as challenging as it is, you know, with the understanding that the GLP-1s are still be covered for diabetes, cardiovascular. And then obviously, the hope would be through the gift of time, we could revisit this and make it more widely accessible for, you know, all participants once we're in a better spot. So that's kind of where I'm at right now, as hard as it is, it is. You know, in addition to one point two million dollar exposure that's not being accounted for, again, I don't see how that doesn't impact the classroom. And again, you know, I've stated before, my North Star is about the kids. And, you know, I don't see how that's not going to negatively impact the kids, which unfortunately does impact, though, you know, many individuals.
Thank you, Dr. Pham.
And one of the things that I think is important to, to recognize is if the district, the board were to exclude the GLPs for the OPC management piece, it's not like we don't have other options for folks. This seems to be, you know, this is a, 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 I'm not going, it's not a magical, this is very effective for some people. But there are also other programs out there that may be not as effective. But we will certainly provide those opportunities to folks and work with them as part of this. So, you know, it's, I don't want to make it sound so crass that, okay, we're not going to cover these anymore. And good luck, go find, you know, take. We, we have with our insurance plan and with our insurance provider, there are other options out there. They may be not as effective, but just wanted to make that clear.
Yes, Sarah.
I'm struggling to, I, I, I feel like, I feel like I can't responsibly vote either way right now just based on the information I have. I, I think I could probably benefit from just having a little bit more information and time to kind of think through some of this. I, I don't know if others, maybe I'm just slow at processing some of this. But I, I, I think there are questions about, that I have about some of the assumptions, about how some of the differences in the plan that's in effect now could impact this. And I, I just, I don't, I think there are just pieces I feel like I'm missing. And while I understand that this is a, I mean, plans all over are looking at carving out or, or raining in coverage for GLP-1s for weight loss because of expense. Like that is just everywhere right now. So it's not, I don't have any concerns necessarily from that perspective. I just, it's almost like I feel like I, I just need more time and a little bit more information to make a responsible decision one way or the other.
So if the decision went one way, there's going to be a financial something that we have to address. If the decision goes the other way, there's going to be personnel, personal issue to, to address. Right now, something's in place, there's momentum one way. So we're kind of looking to maybe scratch that record and then, then stop. And then that's where I get a little bit concerned, say, whoa, wait a minute, you know, like kind of like what you're saying. It's like all of a sudden, on a short moment's notice, we're, we're looking to make a decision and I might just want a little bit more. What is our timeline for this decision? Does this have to happen today?
It even happen next week?
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, yeah, you can, you can wait a few days, but it's going to push everything back. We have, we're going to have to, again, we're, we're, we have to identify what our exposure is as a district. So we sit down and, you know, six and a half percent is our, is our proposal at this point. You approve it at a certain premium, okay, we have to go look at that, and then we have to sit down and we have to get approval from the bargaining units. So, yeah, I mean, you could take some more time, but, I mean, I, it's, and I don't know how much time is going to help solve it, okay? And that's, the bottom line is you have two thirds of your employees, okay, so it's almost seventy percent have said, based upon a survey we provided, exclude GLPs. You have an insurance committee that has said, keep GLPs. And that's where it's at at the end of the day, you know? And the insurance committee is much more focused on impact on personal lives. I think the, the overall district survey is, okay, impact on my, my individual life. And so, I mean, we could, you could wait a few more days, but and, you know, and again, I mean, I think you could, this is a, as Sarah, as you just mentioned, this is just a hot button issue in society right now. And it's unfortunate that, you know, we're not there to the generic level yet, or we're not to the, to the lower price point yet. So that's, we'll, we'll react to what you decide as a board, but it just puts much more pressure on us to, you know, put more pressure on you if you delay this. Because suddenly, okay, well, now the board is, you know, you're going to, you, you will hear, okay, the board has not made up their mind. And so now suddenly, you will get from both sides, okay, over the next number of days. And that's fine, if that's what you, if you want to do as a board, but.
Right, I mean, it's, it's up to us what we want to do. For me, I, this is like an unbelievably difficult decision in so many ways because we're talking about people, right? And people's lives, and I think we've all been probably touched by obesity in one way, shape or form in our families and in our friends, with our friends. But at the same time, I remember when I ran for the board, I really felt like we were committed to turning us around to a better fiscal spot because the challenges that we're facing are getting worse, they're not going away, and they require really tough decisions that just don't feel good. But it's that fiduciary responsibility that we have to make these tough decisions. So I'm, we can do whatever the board wants, but I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that no one wants to make to exclude and go with the thirteen percent. And we can still continue conversation, and I know this is really difficult, and I don't want to be the person giving this. But I don't know what time gives us. And if we decide as a board that we need more time, I'm fine with that too. So.
And I would say with the deeply W R N O, second motion.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Continued discussion. Yeah, sorry.
So I, I know it's our decision. Want to offer a recommendation, administration?
The only recommendation I'm going to offer you is the insurance committee recommends to keep GLPs. The employee survey recommends to discontinue GLPs. That's the recommendation.
Sorry.
Follow up on that. So there, there's a difference out there. You know, if I'm out there talking, I'm going to hear this, I'm going to hear that. So the insurance committee, how was that made up out of the employee group?
It's from representatives of all the bargaining, all, all the bargaining units are represented on the insurance committee.
And you mentioned even retirees earlier?
Yes.
Okay.
And going back to that committee, it sounds like the makeup of the committee has pretty much stayed continuous for a while. But the new member is Aaron, correct?
Yes, the consultant.
Yes, the consultant.
Yeah, I mean, and he just kind of does research and brings forth ideas for the claims. So he's an expert. Yeah, he's an expert in his, in his field. And he, yes, he brought us this recommendation. He said, this is, this is the lever you can pull. And he has gone through with the explanations. He's laid out all the claims history over the last twenty-four months. He's identified how we determine what our claims projections are going to be. And he's given us all of the numbers. And, and then those are all in a presentation with the committee. So the committee can ask, you know, as many questions as they want. And in my past experience, I've never known an insurance committee to have, to be as engaged as, as this one is. I mean, they, they do, they ask a lot of questions and they have a lot of history with this organization and, and have been through a few, quite a few changes with them.
Okay, so I guess the way I'm starting to process this is looking at the new information coming into this committee. Does Aaron then make a recommendation of where to go? Or does he have a vote? Or like, how does that relationship work in this particular committee?
He doesn't have a vote. But he, you know, he, he recommended that we, that we, what we presented to today. So he recommended that, you know, we, we look at cutting the GLPs for weight loss to save that half a million dollars unless we just want to go with the straight eighteen percent. Because we're not, because of the shortfall in our revenue and, and in our plan, this is where, based on all of the numbers and that he's run, this is where we need to be with premium increases.
Thank you for that. And I appreciate having kind of him bringing forward a solution to, especially the financial piece of this. And I appreciate that that was presented to the committee members. And I'm sure that was a tough decision for them to weigh as well. I'm glad they asked lots of questions, and I, and I understand what they learned as well, so. Thank you for answering.
Again, a super difficult decision and one that there might be some legitimate disagreement with in terms of priorities, which, I mean, we just have to probably look at making a decision as quickly as we can with the information we have and supporting the majority position. There is a motion and a second?
And something I just don't want to minimize is also the significant complex process that is involved, that steps have to be to get to the next step, to get to the next step and so forth. And every day does, they can totally impact that. So, you know, like any of us on the surface all would really understand the, 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 the difficulty that might still involve. So I know it's hard for everybody.
Oh, I was just going to ask, Sarah, you mentioned that you needed more information. What, like, just so staff would know maybe what more additional information you would need?
I.
Not to put you off. Sorry, I just.
I mean, I think that, that answer sort of, I mean, is it. I, I, I feel like there's a lot of information, a lot of, I think, questions I have that I think, just in terms of some of the underlying assumptions and what this really means, that I think would be helpful for me to be able to think about and then ask before, before voting. So I don't think, given what I know this minute, I would feel comfortable voting for any sort of change, even though I recognize that we've got to be really budget conscious. I just, I don't, I don't, I don't feel like I have that I'm equipped to vote for any sort of change today, this morning.
Thank you.
And Chair Sherman, can you just provide some insight in terms of what vote options board members would have if they're comfortable voting?
Yeah, so if we, so we have a motion and a second to vote on. If it, if it passes, then the change is made. If it fails, then the floor is open for another motion. There can also be a motion, like, we can table it. But right now, we have the motion and the second to vote on.
And board members could abstain, is one or no?
Yeah, you can, yeah, you can abstain. Yeah, you can, um, yeah, you can abstain.
You want to, yeah. Just to make sure everyone, especially the new board members.
Yeah, yeah, you can vote for it, against it, you can abstain, um, so, yeah.
Let me.
Hold on one, hold on one second because I, you've, you've.
Okay, my, yeah, I just had a. Thinking through, um, Director, so that your, um, your comments about needing more time and more, and this is a lot of information process, and this is definitely not our usual process of getting a really heavy, uh, presentation and then having to make a decision at the board table. Um, and I can definitely sympathize with wanting more time. And as the conversation is progressing, um, I'm definitely thinking, as much as I want more time, I don't necessarily feel like it is needed for me, at least to make this decision, since it's going to be a heavy decision either way. I mean, people are going to be affected, impacted in both directions, and I want to respect the process of all the balls that will start rolling after this and give, um, our staff the time to really use that to make the the best financial decisions or human factors, I mean, all the, whatever decision we go with, I feel like as from a governance level, we really, I would like for us to make a decision and move forward with it to let our our staff kind of deal with the management implications of it, even though there are definitely things that I don't understand. And clearly, you have more background on this, and probably others, Christine as well. So this is, I feel like this is way out of my league professionally, but, um, in terms of allowing our staff to kind of work out the bugs and figure out the logistics of this, even though, yeah, I'd love more time to process, um, I also feel like it's important to make a decision today. That's just where I'm going to take it left. Pete?
And I'm I'm fine with that too, and I tend to, uh, go with the the staff that lived with it, have been thinking this too, and there's a majority of staff, and I'll tend to go with the staff. So just to make sure I understand the clarification of yes, vote is going to be for that thirteen percent, eighteen percent.
That's the motion, yeah, yes. Yes.
I guess two things, responding to you, Pete, uh, you know, the staff voted one way or indicated. I'm sorry, but that said, they don't have as much information as the as the insurance committee does. They don't ask all the same questions that the insurance committee does, they're not as, you know, in depth. I mean, and this goes back to Director, you know, quandary of wanting more information. There are so many stories behind every one of these success, successful uses of these drugs for weight loss that are beyond just vanity, right? Every one of these has, you know, lifestyle changes, the ability to do things they haven't been able to do in years, medical conditions that aren't exacerbated by having, you know, carrying more weight. So it is hard. I mean, that's, that those, all that backstory is what's hard for me, right? That that's where it gets hard to be like, well, you know, we need to, you know, we need to save money. That said, at some level, that's kind of where 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 we are, you know, at in in our current budget, position right now. And so, uh, I think that in the end, the financial considerations are are important and probably more so, and I don't think that the benefit of time would just make me think more about about it without ever coming to any more of a comfortable decision to it, so.
And I also want to acknowledge that we've received some emails, um, from last night. I mean, and still coming in from, like you said, Director, a lot of real people with real positive impact from these drugs, and it is, um, it's impactful. Like, so I appreciate, I want to acknowledge those emails and and just, I appreciate those and just as, these are really difficult decisions, but I wouldn't have made the motion if I didn't feel like from a fiduciary standpoint, this is that important to get us on the right trajectory. And that, yeah, these are just really difficult, difficult decisions and, so, yeah.
Yeah, I would echo that, Chair Sherman, just, you know, obviously I would second it, um, but I think it was, was unfortunately needs to be done as difficult as it is, but, you know, I think from a a board member expectation, especially for our board members, I know everyone has to, you know, vote their conscience. And, you know, their individual vote is theirs. Obviously, the expectation was, obviously, whatever outcomes gets, uh, set by the board, then we all are in support of that in in units, and I think that's such an important part of the decision. And the board has done really, our current board has done a really great job with, so, um, doesn't make it any easier.
No.
It's, yeah, yeah, it's hard.
Yeah, I respect everyone here at the table, and everyone's going to bring in their own personal experiences and professional expertise and knowledge, so, um, however it spoke comes, but I appreciate the dialogue and the conversation. Um, and certainly the staff's time involved in working through all these really difficult and complex conversations. Any other comments? We do have a motion and a second, a lot of us probably have to get to work. So I will, I think we're ready for a vote, just to see where we are at right now. So we have a motion and a second to, um, support the thirteen percent. And that will maintain the GLP one coverage for medical purposes, not for weight loss purposes, just to be clear on that. All those in favor of supporting the motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
And then abstent, abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Again, heavy heart in this decision and, um, yeah, just a heavy heart, so with that, we're adjourned.